Now I call the Arden County 7 o'clock meeting to order for Arden County Commissioners. I'll call Mr. Johnson for the indication.
Let us pray, please. Father, we have several matters before us tonight, and most of them rather mundane and run-of-the-mill, but Father, one thing we're all anxious about is we're going to approve the county budget. And there's been a lot of good, honest, hard work going into this, and yet there remains so much uncertainty about the future economic climate, about energy prices and so forth. I pray you'll bless this budget. I pray you'll honor the faithful work of our staff and my fellow board members and myself, that we did the best we could, and that you'll bless our work, and that things will just work out, that it'll serve the people of this county well, and that, Father, that you would just guide the decision-making process in all areas of government so that freedom can abound, that folks can prosper, and that we'll do well and serve well. We ask these things in the name of our Lord Jesus, and for His sake, amen.
Let us stand up for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call Mr. Mashman for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I do have some adjustments to the agenda under administrative matters. Item R is a request to approve an amendment to the capital project ordinance for the Arden Stateful School Construction Projects for 2006. Item S is a motion to call for a public hearing on July the 15th, 2008, to close out the 2003 scattered-site housing grant. And item T is also a motion to call for a public hearing on July the 15th, 2008, to hear public comments on the FY-09 rope allocation or application. Those are transportation funds, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. Are any additions or questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any additional questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Special recognition, tonight we have three students from University of North Carolina Charlotte here with us, in present, Lloyd Chisholm, Jennifer Thompson, and David Reynolds. Thank you for coming. And these students are here, if I understand it correctly, they're working on their communications degree, is that correct? Okay, we're glad to have you. We do have one public hearing tonight, consideration of Shepherd's Volunteer Fire Department's expansion from five to six miles. We will open that public hearing up now. We'll call Mr. Ramsey, Board Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, county officials. We're here tonight to talk about the expansion of the Shepherd's Volunteer Fire Department from, Fire District from five to six miles. Been here to talk to you before with other departments. This is the last one. As y'all know, the North Carolina Department of Insurance, State Fire Marshal's Office has allowed fire districts to expand to six miles, and we're doing all this basically to help those folks who would be outside of a five-mile district so we can get them in somebody's six. All this work was done for the taxpayers, and once again, we'd like for your support on this public hearing tonight.
Mr. Ramsey, that in some of the other districts, there were some pockets of land that you just couldn't see it. Were you able to take care of everybody in this one?
No, sir. We're still going to have, I think there's four holes in the county. We have a large one in the northeast, no, excuse me, northwest corner of the county, and we have, I think, three other spots where we're going to have holes, and unfortunately, those folks are going to be paying a ten on their homeowner's insurance. We will have fire departments respond to those properties. You know, response-wise, we'll cover the whole county, but there are going to be a few holes that unfortunately, until some changes are made, stations moved, whatever else, we just can't get them in anybody's six-mile district.
But in terms of Shepherd's six-mile district, do you have any of that?
I don't think we have a hole, I don't think we have any holes in the Shepherd's end.
Okay.
I think that takes care of all of Shepherd's.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Ramsey? If not, we'd like to thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And this is the public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this request? In favor or against, we'd be glad to have you speak. Okay, if there's no one else wishing to speak, at this time, I will close this public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Shepherd Volunteer Fire Department's expansion from a five to a six-mile fire protection district.
Thank you, Ms. Tyce. Are there any questions regarding the motion? If no questions, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. 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 Those opposed, nay. Thank you. We'll now close the public hearing. Call on Mr. Mashman, administrative matters.
Mr. Chair, the following items are under administrative matters consent agenda. Item A, reappointment of Shannon Lester as a deputy tax collector. Item B, approval of the May refunds and releases. Item C, approval of a resolution in opposition to House Bill 1889, an act to provide property tax relief for qualifying wildlife conservation land and to clarify the present use valuation of property subject to a conservation easement. And again, this is more in opposition to the fact that there is so much unknown about what the impact of this bill is going to be, and it basically is requesting additional time to weigh the benefits as well as the impact that it would have. Item D is approval of a request from Harold and Paulette Childers for a zoning and subdivision jurisdiction release to the town of Mooresville for 5.39 acres at 146 Dooley Road in Mooresville. Item E is approval of a request from Randall Scott Robbins for a zoning and subdivision jurisdiction release to the town of Mooresville for 1.51 acres at 147 Dooley Road in Mooresville. Item F is approval of a request from the Sheriff's Department for approval for a resolution to award a badge and service side arm to retiree Barbara Childers. Item G is approval to award a contract to Nixon Power Service for the installation of a $155,958 generator system at South Arden High School. And one of the reasons that this has been installed is because this is considered a site for, in the event of emergency, and we had to have a place that we would take people to during an emergency to, if they had to leave their homes and so forth. And that's the reason we need a generator at that location. Item H is approval of a request from the Health Department for budget amendment number 50 to purchase information technology equipment. Item I is approval of a request from the Health Department to reimburse Board of Health members a flat fee of $50 a month effective July the 1st of 2008. Currently, the members receive a $25 meeting plus mileage. Item J is approval of a revised Health Department fee policy for FY-0809. Item K is approval of budget amendment number 51 to recognize additional JCPC funding. This is a pass-through allocation, and it's received from the state to appropriate to Barium Springs Home for Children and to Scan. Item L is approval of budget amendment number 52 to appropriate additional funds in the EMS budget and the Fire Marshal budget. This is to cover anticipated fuel overruns. Item M is approval to proceed with the required six-month notification of a lease termination with Twin Oaks Golf Development and permission to seek lease management bids. Item N is approval of a Pratt Public Facilities Project Amendment Capital Project Ordinance. Item O is adoption of a North Arden Park Fund Amendment Capital Project Ordinance. Item Q is approval of the May 27 and 29 minutes along with the June 3 and 5 minutes of 2008. Item R is approval of amendment to the Capital Project Ordinance of the Arden Stateful School Construction Project for 2006. Item S is a motion to call for a public hearing on July the 15th, 2008, to close out the 2003 scattered-site housing grant. And item T is motion to call for a public hearing on July the 15th, 2008, to hear public comments on the FY-09 rope application. Those are the consent agenda items, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. You've heard of consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Chair, the last item under administrative matters is a request that you approve the FY-2008, 2009 Arden County Budget Ordinance, and I'm going to call on our Finance Director, Susan Blumenstein, to highlight some of that for you.
The ordinance that's presented to you tonight includes the general fund budget of $168,591,850. The original budget recommended to the board was a million, excuse me, $169,612,420, and the board did make total decreases of $1,020,570. This is based on a 44.5 cent tax rate, the same as the prior fiscal year. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein?
I would like to add, though, I'm sorry, that the budget does include two and a half percent across-the-board increase for county employees, a minimum of $1,000. It also includes merit money that provides a pull to reward employees who have excellent performance during the year. That plan is a four-tiered plan with those merit increases from zero, two, three, and four percent.
Thank you, Ms. Blumenstein. And at this time, we want to thank you and Mr. Mashman and the staff for putting such a good budget, for the commissioners for the input and work sessions.
We do appreciate what you've done.
Are there any other comments?
I think it was a good idea, based on the cost of fuel, to apply some of that money back into that contingency fund. The uncertainty of where the fuel's going to go, and you can see from the article in the paper yesterday, I guess, about the school system, what they're faced with, and I hope we're not faced with the same thing that's coming here.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the 2008, 2009 county budget with the amendments that were made during the budget hearings and is presented here tonight by our staff.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any questions regarding the motion? No questions, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, please say nay. Thank you for the approval. Announcements occurring on boards and commissions, Adult Care Home Committee Advisory Committee, one announcement. Appointments for boards and commissions, the boards and commissions, Adult Care Home Committee Advisory Committee, three appointments.
Move to table till our next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. State for Plan Board, E.T.J., one appointment.
Make a motion, we table it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Motion to table, any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye. 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 National Home Advisory Committee, full appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. 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 Criminal Justice Partnership Program Committee, one appointment.
Here none, I make a motion, we table it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, anyone? Okay. Member Agreements Committee, one alternate appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table. All in favor, please say aye. 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 Central Line of Workforce Development Board, one appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion to table, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Region F Advisory Committee, one appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Motion to table, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Unfinished business, do we have any? Do we have anyone wishing to speak in the public comment period? Anyone in the audience? Any new business? County Ministers report, Ms. Mashman.
Mr. Chair, don't have a report other than the activity report that's placed before you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mashman. At this time, we will, if there's any motion, go on close session under GS 143, that's 318.11, Section A, under Personnel, Section 6. If there's any motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Okay, close.[1129.65]